I'll tell you what's kind of pain about the Robertson gaps. It tells you.
I promise I won't. I'm pretty sure it is.
He was talking to somebody in Indonesia or something the other day.
He was talking to somebody in Indonesia or something the other day.
Oh, cool. Yeah, some of the kids were there from the group home. They were very nice to my little guys and let them play basketball with them and that was fun.
How much did I got? So what I do, my guy, I start with 2.7. This is 86. 89 minus 86 is 3 cents, 3 cents is 2.7 plus half a million. 3.2. And then 3.2 divided by 55,000 is basically 60 cents. And then this is about 3.2. Is that right? Am I doing that right?
Yeah, 380 minus 60.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, 380 minus 60 is 3.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I just wanted to mention and make a motion that we adopt the equalization rate of 76.7 for the real estate tax in Lynchburg and that we direct staff to basically create an ordinance to do that.
I don't even.
Well, last night, we didn't ever vote to adjourn. No, I'm just saying we didn't adjourn, so technically that meeting is still open.
No, it's not.
And my motion is on the floor.
On the floor.
The meeting was adjourned last night.
I don't think we had minutes. Talk about all this.
Well, then it'll be a different meeting. The meeting that's open right now is the one that didn't get adjourned last night and on the agenda was exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, Mayor, with that in mind, no other motions at hand. You can't have another motion if there's a motion to adjourn. The only motion you can consider right now would be the motion to adjourn, get back and the meeting from yesterday.
But there's.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting from yesterday. There is happening. So you can come up, there's going to debate if they want to take a vote, that's the only vote you can take.
To adjourn the meeting from last night.
I'm going to say point of order on that. There's no discussion on.
No, there's a point of order, that's not a debate, not a motion, that's a point of order because there's a motion in the second floor.
He's got the floor. Mr. Missions is entitled to state's point of order, whatever work session or continue meeting.
So the point of order is that the rules and procedure are extremely clear that if any council motion during the election, the motion may be made only if the conclusion of action, depending something that matters. You had first, I had second, that depending something that matters may not interrupt deliberation depending matter, the motion is not taken, cannot be amended. So to make that motion, which was just made in a second, it actually interrupts the deliberation depending matter, if there's a motion, there's a second, we've got a motion on the floor to equalize the real estate tax rate at 76.7 cents.
So my inter was it pending? My interpretation, my interpretation was, as Congressman Miller said, it was pending. So what that language means to me is that if you're mid-motion, so if a motion had been on the table, being debated and talked through, a motion to adjourn mid-motion would be out of order. The way that motion to adjourn came about is before the business began being discussed, before the public hearing had opened and taken place. So certainly counsel, if it believes that the meeting has continued and here we are, you can take a vote to conclude it, begin the work session. In my mind, from a legal perspective, counsel may be clear that the meeting was concluded by its action, a majority left after the meeting was formally declared adjourned by the mayor. And I think that's enough. These rules and procedures, as I've mentioned previously, are really for council's convenience and not laws or not amendments, but it's really council's pleasure. If you all want to clear the record and have a vote on the motion to adjourn, you can, or we can proceed with the work session. It sounds like there's a desire to put this to bed and so.
So just to be clear, your ruling is that we may be in a meeting and therefore it's eligible, or we may not be in a meeting, so I'm trying to understand, because it kind of came down on both sides of it.
I don't think we ought, but it sounds like members of council that think we ought, that we're still in a meeting.
Until we adjourn, yeah.
Yeah, so if that's the case, really to resolve all members' concerns, a vote would be in order to adjourn, but my perspective is it was adjourned.
Okay.
Point of order on that. Point of order on.
Was pulling a bullet.
Back at, you said that it was adjourned, Mr. Freeman, did we have a recorded vote?
That's not a point of order.
Because under the rules and procedure.
Mayor, they're trying to use this to be able to debate.
Councilmember Brawley, I have a floor.
No, you don't.
I do, actually, I have a floor on point of order. Each council member, section 6.9, with precedent and meeting, are required to vote on all issues presented for decision, unless prohibited by doing so by the Virginia Council of the Michigan Act. So we have a duty to vote, we are required to vote, there was no vote last night on the motion to adjourn the vote, there was no vote. The four of you got up and left. There was no votes to adjourn the meeting, so my point of order on that is to say that the meeting was adjourned last night, we have a duty to vote, under Virginia law, under our rules and procedure, that duty was breached, there was no vote. I didn't vote. If I didn't vote, I would have had to disclose why I didn't vote.
Mayor, this is.
So to say that that meeting was adjourned last night is completely out of line.
I'm calling, I'm calling a motion to adjourn the meeting from last night.
You can't call a motion to adjourn, there's a motion to set the real estate rate at 76.7, I would, there was a second. This is absolute, this is absolute tyranny right here.
A real point of order.
That's what this is.
Now, if we're at recess and we just came back, there cannot be another motion made when one's pending, and if it is.
Say the rule. Say the rule.
I don't.
Yes, you do, you've got to say that. You don't ever say rules, you don't know the rest.
Point of order, the mayor's call of a question is out of order because there was a motion on the floor and it was seconded and we need to deal with that. It was on the agenda that we would do exactly what we're doing. I've tried to introduce the equalization rate so many times I can't even count and I'm doing it again now.
Let us vote.
And I want, and I want.
Let us vote on the motion that was made last night to adjourn the meeting.
That's not the one on the floor.
That's not the motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor. It's not the motion on the floor, that's not the county council member.
The meeting, the meeting had not been opened when he made a motion.
The meeting.
The other meeting was still open.
The other meeting was never closed.
The other meeting was never closed, we're still in that meeting.
I'm calling a vote.
You're calling a vote on what?
To close the meeting from last night.
So the meeting from last night is open. If the meeting from last night is open, there's a motion on the floor and a second, and you're denying a valid motion and a second. You acknowledge the meeting is still open.
Just let us vote on it.
You're denying.
Let's vote to close the meeting from last night.
There's a, there's a motion to equalize the real estate tax rate?
Yes.
And a second.
Point of order. Point of order. We are conducting a meeting, an official meeting that is still open, except everybody's decided that this is a meeting, but we don't, we don't have on the cameras and we don't have on the microphones and we're hiding this from the public. And I, I think it's.
This is some Soviet-style stuff right here. You know that?
Announce the vote.
Soviet-style stuff.
My vote.
And if this, if this keep up.
My vote. She's asked for my vote.
If this meeting don't come to order, I'm going to see if we can get fines and censures because I'm tired of.
Because that works so well.
Meeting right now, you're just adjourned.
I just, I just gathered in the work session.
Okay.
This is going to stop.
I'd like to record my vote if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor. For what? I didn't abstain. I'm going to vote on the proper motion that was on the floor properly.
We're in the work session.
To, to, to support my motion to do the equalization rate, that is the only proper motion on this floor and that's the only one anybody here should be allowed to vote on, and I'm voting in favor of that.
I'm also voting in favor of that.
We're in the work session.
We're in the work session. And I would turn over to Mr. Bender to go over the budget.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, good afternoon. Glad to be here with each one of you. Want to highlight at the end of this week, a momentous thing for all of us, that we're going to open a brand-new police headquarters, and I hope that each of you have been invited and received your invitation. It's an important impactful thing. If you've been by it, driven by it recently, I know some of you have had an opportunity to tour it, so it's a big deal, and I guess hydrate because it's been, it's been warm outside. So Mayor, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Donna and Greg to walk you through a couple scenarios that have been proposed.
Thanks, Mitch. So I was asked to put together several scenarios. Y'all received a memo later, earlier today by email that kind of laid out a little bit of these scenarios, and I'd like to walk through them in a little bit more detail. What Greg is passing out is further detail for every line item that's referenced in these scenarios. So the first one, just as a reminder, is the city manager's proposed budget at an 89-cent real estate tax rate, which included no service level reductions and the new initiatives of the 3% cost of living adjustment and public pay progression, the Lynchburg City Schools' 3% increase for staff that was in the governor's budget of 2.7, and then the half a million dollars for the proposed increase to the elderly and disabled tax relief program. At 86 cents, this would result in a $2.7 million reduction in the real estate tax revenue. And let me just explain the $785,356. So there is a difference between what was actually in the proposed budget and in the time that we got that number from the assessor and as he did further work and put out his equalized rate, there is about $785,356 difference there. So we do realize that little bit of revenue. We also, at an 86 cent rate, we would need to adjust the property housing rehab program, so that's $37,000. And then we're increasing our interest revenue by $300,000. We're realizing significant revenue there, we think that we're going to see that in 2026. And then we also eliminated the elderly and disabled tax relief program by half a million dollars, which led to a revenue adjustment of basically $1.1 million. So on the, the expense side of that, Mitch, I know this is small, but you'll see the, what is summarized by each department here that gets you to the $1.1 million. What Greg has passed out will show you the line items that are for each of those departments. The thing to note here is there are no, there is no reduction in filled or vacant positions. At 86 cents, we can keep our staffing level the same. If we go on to 83 cents, the change in revenue is 5.4 million for real estate. Again, we have the $785,000. We realize the adjusted rehab program difference will be $85,721. We included the interest income increase and then also eliminating the elderly and disabled tax relief, expansion of that program, which led us to a reduction of 3.77 million in our revenues. And then the expense side of that, you'll see this again summarized by department, the details are in your handout, but this would result in 32.23 reduction in positions. And if you flip to the next slide, you'll see those impact positions and 16.34 FTE are filled and 15.89 FTE are vacant, and that is a list of the impacted positions. If you go on to the 76.7 real estate tax rate scenario, this equalizes the tax rate, it would be $11 million reduction in real estate. Again, the adjustments you've seen on the previous page, the rehab program adjustment is $187,000. You see the increase in investments and we eliminated the elderly disabled tax relief program, so it's resulting in a nine, basically $9.4 billion reduction in your revenues. This does remove the 3% cost of living adjustment, the public safety pay progression, and also the 3% for city schools. So that revised adjustment is 4.1 million that we would need to also take out of our departments. That's on the next page, summarized by department, and this also would result in a 32.23 FTE reduction in staff. And again, those impacted positions are on the next page. In a scenario to equalize the tax rate, that we included the 2.7 million for schools and the cost of living increase and the pay progression plan, honestly, it's ugly. And it would impact a lot of city council's priorities, it would potentially break contractual agreements and promises to retirees, especially those that were hired before June 30, 1996. So we really didn't even get that balance because it, it just breaks too many promises, rules, and priorities. But, so if there is, if there is consideration by council, you flip the next one, to include those things in an equalized tax rate budget, you would need to look at increases to other tax rates or fees, like lodging or meals, other revenues, or you'd have to leave the real estate tax rate unchanged and reduce other tax rates or fees, so like the car tax or something else. So something would have to give to make that balance, to be able to include the schools' progression pay for public safety and for staff. So that's kind of where we are. But again, those, this handout that you have shows the line item details. Happy to answer questions.
Dave?
At the rate I just proposed a few minutes ago that we didn't get to vote on, which I'd still like someday get a vote on, the equalization rate, is it correct? Is my understanding correct that that is the revenue neutral, that the city would basically continue to get the same amount of money?
Equalization means it's basically the same amount of money, but it's going to be different from everyone because you're looking at a, each scenario is different. So you're looking at a average rate across the board when you think about it that way. But we also, with equalized rate, the way the formula works is you do recognize new revenue, so any new construction or completed projects because, and how we look at that. So that's in the calculation that's done by the city assessor.
New, new construction is included?
Yes.
So when I looked at the last few years, the equalization rate always ended up bringing in more revenue than the estimates. Would you agree that that's been your historical understanding as well?
Because of growth, new construction growth.
But now we're including new construction?
No, you always.
Equalization rate is only calculated on existing real estate. Any growth to existing real estate or any. Any growth to existing real estate or any new development exists separate and aside from equalization.
Which is part of the reason why it ends up bringing in, it's not neutral. We end up, the city ends up getting more money, right?
It's revenue neutral to existing real estate.
To existing.
But if there has been any growth to existing real estate or new development, overall real estate revenue would grow.
Okay, 'cause it sounded like for a minute you had calculated this based on potential new construction, but that is not the case.
No, 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 that's, that's set aside. You will see that we collect additional revenue because of that new growth.
Sure, sure.
But equalization...
And that's why it seems to always come back a little higher than, than the revenue neutral. Revenue neutral mean you didn't take a dime in more than last year than you did the year before. So, let me ask one more question. If, if the, it does come in almost every time ahead of schedule, so it's, we're aiming for neutral, but almost never hit it. The city still makes money, and I've used the phrase, "The house always wins," because the city is like the Vegas casino, okay? Anybody's been to Vegas knows the house always wins. And, uh, no matter what you do, there's nothing revenue neutral about a casino in Las Vegas. And very similar, uh, the city revenue neutral, equalization rate that I just proposed, always ends up with the city getting more money than was expected, partially because of new construction. Are there other reasons why the city, uh, regularly gets more money than, than they expected, other than new construction? So, everything that comes in above and beyond the neutralization number is only from construction that starts afterwards. No other, no other reason.
I, I mean, if we have an allowance, I don't know if, Donna, if we include allowance for...
We used to include an allowance, but...
So, we're, we're assuming we collect a hundred percent of what we bill. The, the only way, in theory, that we collect more overall real estate revenue is if our, uh, delinquent real estate collections come in above budget, but that's unrelated to the current, to the current fiscal year, potentially.
If meals tax collects way more than...
So, you're talking about outside of real estate?
Okay.
No, are, are you?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, i- if, if there's growth in, um, all the other sources of revenue?
We'll have more revenue, potentially.
Yes.
Could go down, could go either way, right? It's just to be honest. Let me ask you this. If people sell their home, or their home gets demolished by the city, or if anyway the, the real estate property is gone, and the estimated income or revenue from that building isn't realized, wouldn't that also take away from the rate? Or, or is that not even calculated in, or how does that affect the fact that we get more?
Someone selling their home would have no impact whatsoever?
Okay.
Based on assessment.
So, the city only gets it if there's a new construction, but we don't lose it if the house burns down?
It's based on the assessment. So, if a house is assessed for less because it burned down or whatever...
But that's after the assessment, so they're still going by...
We'd have to check with the assessor. I believe that a substantive change in the value of the home would, uh, i- i- if the homeowner, the property owner contacted the assessor's office, they would go out and reassess the property at, um, a- a- at, at its new fair market value.
All right, I appreciate your information, I, I thank you for that. I think I understand, um, I have come out in favor of a lower-than, uh, equalization rate, because, uh, when I campaigned door-to-door, I made it clear that I, I didn't want to support any tax increase. But even with equalization, some people may pay a tax increase, isn't that correct?
Oh, it's absolutely possible, 'cause it's based on an average. And if your, your home may have gone up...
Pay lower.
And, yeah, exactly.
Some people may have...
Some would be higher, some would be lower.
But the bottom line is the city's supposed to take in the same amount. Revenue, it's supposed to be neutral, right? That's the goal of...
As best can be calculated without new growth.
And, uh, but the reality is, they often get more. So, I'm just trying to figure out why we have to grow the size of government. I'm, I'm trying to figure out why, why government needs...
You're not growing the size of government?
Well, if you're, if you're...
You're growing the revenue, but it costs more every year to provide the same level of serf, I'm sorry if I interrupted.
I understand. Expenses go up and, and there is, uh, there is, you know, obviously inflation. We've talked about some crazy rates, and we've talked about some moderate rates, and we've talked about some equalization rates, and I've talked about a lower-than-equalization rate. I still think the, uh, thing that's fairest to the citizens, and it doesn't, you can argue with me, grow government is, is any more than possible, 'cause you're still bringing in more money, you said it, more money than equal. So, that's, still grow in government if you take in more money. I'm sure we'll find a way to spend the more money, we always seem to do that. But to leave that money in the citizen's pocket is still, uh, my goal. And, uh, and as such, I would like to, once again, uh, introduce my motion for the umpteenth time to, uh, to have the equalization rate, seventy-six-point-seven. I would like to, uh, to do that. Doesn't require a public hearing. Um, we, we canceled that last night. It's not an increase in taxes. That's what we've done before, and the city will get more money, so.
So, without a, uh, suspension of the rules of procedures, motions like this would not be considered as part of a work session.
No, I was, not that you was...
Why did the proposed budget have a fourteen percent increase for the salaries and benefits for the city manager's office when everybody was getting a three percent general wage increase? Make sure that, heard that on the mic. Why did the city manager's office have a fourteen percent increase for salaries and benefits? It was an outlier among all the departments with no change in FTEs when everybody else in the city was projected for a three percent general wage increase? So, so how do we go from? 'Cause there's no, in the, in the budget submission documents you provided, there's no amplifying information on why there's a fourteen percent increase for the city manager's office.
Yeah, I mean, if that's a question you would've sent ahead of the meeting, we could've had an answer prepared. But I don't think we can, we, we can provide an answer, but we certainly can't do so, uh, while we're sitting at the table.
Well, I mean, I would think that the people involved in that office, that it would affect their own pay, would know the answer to that.
They voted on contracts.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a number of factors, right? So, there's, um, filled, there's, there's, there's a, a position that was filled that was previously vacant. There was, uh, an additional, uh, increase that council provided to the city manager. We would be happy to get you all of that information and, and describe that entire increase, uh, but we can't do it live during the meeting.
Yeah, that'd be good to know. And then another question I have is, you know, when I look at what's provided here, why are we hanging on to a three percent general wage increase for all the city staff when it's been very clear among four council members that the priority was public safety pay progression plan and teachers? I know council member Feraldi has said it very openly, he actually put it out last night. I know Vice Mayor Deemer said it, I've said it, I know Councilmember Timmer said it. Why, when, like, why is it then, when it's very loud and clear in public, that four members of council have said, "We don't think it's appropriate to raise taxes on our citizens," and "Our priorities for funding should be the public safety pay progression plan and the teachers." Why, why are we holding on to that three percent general wage increase for all city staff?
I, I think, um, we're at a budget work session now. If four people at a budget work session or at a formal council meeting, uh, tell us that they don't want to fund the, um, general, the, uh, cost-of-living adjustment for general employees, then we would certainly take it out. We, we don't read your social media posts or, or make decisions based on what's posted, uh, online.
I've gotten emailed from you guys about my social media posts, so that's not accurate.
And so, so, uh, I don't, and I don't think Donna does, and I don't think the city manager does. Probably, uh, but that is not what's best for our primary job, which is trying to make sure that the city operates and functions well on a daily basis. We got a lot of work to do there that we have, um, uh, have done less of during this budget process. But, but I, I would tell you this, um, the last thing that we want to do in an organization, uh, is create winners and losers and stratify the organization. I can tell you, police officers are very important, the refuse collectors are very important. Uh, so I think we'd strongly make the argument, uh, that what you do for one, you should do for all. Uh, but if four council members, uh, at, at a, uh, at, at a meeting, uh, tell us that, uh, we do not want to fund the cost-of-living adjustment for, uh, general employees, um, then, then we don't have to discuss it anymore, come out.
So, I'm, I'm just curious, though, 'cause it seems to me like, I think the problem in this whole budget process was just identified. Staff thinks it's automatic that the taxpayers fund salary increases for you guys. The citizens aren't getting salary increases. Right? When the citizens aren't getting salary increases, why is it automatic? Why do we have to vote to take that out of the budget? We should be voting to add that in.
And that's not how your charter works.
So, our charter, our chair, our charter mandates salary increases?
No, the charter sets the city manager as the budget commissioner. He is charged with proposing a budget based on the information that he receives from the departments across the city. He uses his expertise that he has ga, that he has gathered with, uh, over twenty-plus years in this instance, uh, as a professional manager to recommend to council, uh, what he and staff think is, uh, the, is appropriate based on council priorities. From there, that budget belongs to council. It is for council to dispose of. The manager proposes and the council disposes. Staff doesn't think anything is automatic, but, but, uh, the city manager's proposed budget did include that salary increase. It is now in council's hands to accept that or not accept that.
So, I'm glad you mentioned the charter and how we gotta stick to that, because the charter also says that we are supposed to set the city manager's compensation, it says "shall," by ordinance or resolution, that's a public vote. That's never happened. Right? So, if we're gonna pick and choose things out of the charter, then we should pick all of them and, and do them appropriately. So, I, I understand what you're saying, however, um, it's still, you know, why, why are we automatically thinking we're gonna take money? 'Cause that's what taxation is, we're taking money from citizens. And now we're gonna go take more money from citizens to give more money to city staff. And, you know, I heard it loud and clear. Right? Take care of public safety, take care of our teachers. Don't raise my taxes. That's what I heard. And, you know, when I see that, and I, it's, I think it's been pretty clear, I, I know that Councilmember Feraldi mentioned it, I think just last night, about his priorities. Right? His priorities didn't include a citywide salary increase of three percent. I worked for the city for many years, when the only time I ever got a salary increase was when the minimum pay for the position I was in increased. Right? So, so to, to be in this situation where we see just rising costs of living for our citizens. Right? And then we're gonna just reach in their pocket to take more, to pay city staff more automatically, when right now the average or median payer, I think it was like sixty thousand, somewhere close to that for a city employee? I think it's something, something you guys presented like that?
With benefits.
Yeah, I don't recall offhand, but that doesn't depend on whether you include benefits or not.
That's the, um, you know, that's, that's, that's pretty much equivalent to householding, though.
But what about the city employees that also live in the city?
What percentage of the population is that? You're in Charlotte County, so that's not you, man.
No, it's not me, but I have a number of staff that also live in the city.
I understand that, I get that. But I work for the citizens, not just the staff that are citizens. All of the citizens collectively.
Submission is contemplative of what you've proposed, and I think, uh, Mr. Patrick's spot-on. If we've missed where you went ahead as it relates to a general wage increase, we'll move in that direction and, and remove it. I will offer that, um, part of, when I arrived here three and a half years ago, and you mentioned it, and it's a really good point, is that there were ten-plus years where the organization itself didn't see, uh, increases. In fact, it was flat, or maybe it was a bonus. And when I arrived and was asked to, uh, kind of lean into and kind of make, uh, make strides in is, um, compression. And so, through your generous, um, support, uh, of previous budgets, um, they have included, uh, general wage increases, um, for employees. And what I also contemplate, um, when, when we're looking at who we are, we're one of the top five employers within the city, and I have to compete for the best employees. Um, and what I also have to pay attention to is on parity, what other jurisdictions are doing and how, how we're striving to get the talent that we need. And so, we've seen it, and, uh, I, I think kudos to this, uh, to this group and the investment that you made in public safety across the board. And what you've seen as a direct result is lateral or other moves from, um, surrounding counties and surrounding cities into our, into our different departments. And the same is true in other areas that we've looked at, whether or not it was CDL drivers or what have you. And so, and whether or not it was, uh, forward-facing custodial workers. And I think we brought up waste management. So, um, in this market, we're competing for the best talent to provide the best services associated with it. So, again, what I come back to is what I started with. If there are four people who are not supportive of the general wage increase, we will move in that direction and remove it from, uh, whatever's ultimately adopted. It is not anything, uh, I would offer that, um, is expected and/or put forward. It's also just an element or aspect, um, in current, um, booming times with what we've seen across, uh, our country, is that, um, it, to compete and make sure that we have the best talent, some of that is making sure that they're compensated well. And the other part of it is also just ten years to what you alluded to, where there was, uh, there weren't the increases, there weren't the necessarily investments made. And so, in some of this, it's, uh, getting the organization healthy again. And so, um, but again, what I come back to is, if there are, um, four people who are not interested in supporting, uh, that in the ultimate, uh, ultimate, uh, thing that you approve, we will move in that direction.
And, and you know, I think, thank you, Mr. Manager. I think the, uh, I'm still, I've still the floor, Mr. Mayor. The thing to point out here is the budget that was proposed was over eleven million dollars. And then, in the last decade, we had the largest increase adjusted to today's dollars. What does that say? Five-point-seven-five? Five-point-seven-five million dollars. So, what we're looking at right now is close to twice what was proposed. The largest increase in real estate taxation on our citizens in a decade. That was, that's what was proposed. And the spending is out of control. That's what it comes down to. The spending in the city government is absolutely out of control. I haven't had a chance to finish digging through everything that's been provided, and I thank you for that. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't appreciate being told, as a council member, that I'm gonna be charged for staff time for asking where our citizens' money is going. I don't appreciate being told that I'm gonna be sent a bill for staff time to find out where our citizens' money is going. Not acceptable. Okay? The, the blockades in this process are just off the charts. Have been absolutely off the charts. And, you know, this bloated budget should fail. Because we have a six-one Republican majority. People that ran on lowering taxes, people that ran on endings the pandemic tax hike. People that ran on putting citizens, taxpayers, over projects. Ran on putting taxpayers over projects. And you know what? We got luxurious projects on the taxpayers' backs. We have exorbitant spending on the taxpayers' backs. I appreciate the comments and the concerns about, um, staff members that, that live in the city, and, and I understand that. Some of them are my neighbors. And you know what? They want me to take this stand, and I'm gonna take this stand. But we've got to get this spending under control.
Thank you, somebody, I appreciate that. Um, thank you, city staff, for the comments and for the report you presented. Um, if you could go back to the eighty-nine cents, um, so, the, the original... So the original budget request was 89 cents, is that correct? And if we go down, the next one, how much, if we go down to like 86 cents, how much do the cuts look like?
$1.1 million.
Okay. And what does that line item look like? I'm sorry.
The IT department.
Next, thank you. So those are the cuts there, almost over a million dollars in cuts to services. Okay, thank you. I just appreciate living in the city. I appreciate, I think all staff deserve a raise. I appreciate the fire. I appreciate the police. I appreciate all workers, social workers. Like I remember, because I live in the old Dom Hill area, I remember how when, like 12 o'clock at night, they had some kind of water situation, so the workers were there 12 o'clock in the morning trying to prepare water for our city. So they worked all kinds of hours at night. The kind of heat, right now it's hot, I don't know what. So whether it's hot or whether it's cold, they can't say, oh, I'm not going because it's too hot or it's too cold. So I just believe all workers deserve a 3% raise. You know, we talk about the price of eggs, everything else going up, gas, all that stuff going up. Our city workers also need a raise. In order, if we want to keep them from outside counties and various other things, we need to show our city staff that we appreciate them. We thank you for your service. We appreciate you. And also, I want to live in a city that continues to grow. We have one of the largest institutions, college institutions, in our country, in Lynchburg, and they come here for the city, for the institution. If we want to keep them here, they don't want to come to a dead city. They want to come to a city that's thriving. Go to Liberty, ask any of those students right now, what kind of city do you want to live in? I want to live in a city that's thriving, that has some resources. So just maintain some of the resources that we appreciate in our city. So I see all staff need a 3% raise. I'm hyped for the quality of life, whether it's the parks, or the trails, or the schools, or whatever the case may be. In order to maintain certain services, we need to maintain certain quality of life in our city. So I appreciate that. I do support, you know, I would like to go back to 89 cents, but again, I will, again, compromise and work with the 86 cents. 86 cents. I know we've shown some services. If we go down much lower, the cuts are so deep, cuts to senior citizens, cuts to other property. Go to the, go to the one that says the 78 cents, whatever the case may be, the last one, the 76 cents, yes. So the cuts are, what's that page, which shows all the cuts and things? Yeah. So those, look at all the cuts of those are services. That's not just this one and that one. Those are actual, real people, actual, real services that are going to be cut that our citizens rely on. So we, I just don't want to see all the services cut, because I want to maintain the quality of life in our city. I want to maintain the services and life in our city. I want to maintain all citizens, all city staff members need a 3% raise. I don't think we should go to our city workers and say, you don't get a raise this year. That is not fair, because you're not a police, because you're not fired. That is not, to me, as a child of God, I just can't see, oh, I'm picking you or I'm picking you. That's just not fair. I want to see all our citizens be blessed, all our city staff members deserve an increase. I do support that. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you. So, yes, we said that we want to support our law enforcement, public safety community with the cost of living increase. But I, to echo some of what Dr. Wilder said, I think a lot of emphasis has been that the rest of the cost of living increase would be given to the evil city manager's office. They're so terrible, and they have all this extra money, and that's where this, the rest of the increase would go, because they've been so horrifically demonized. The other departments that would be, would not be getting an increase are also essential. What happens if the IT department decided to all quit because they don't feel valued? Because they don't get a raise? Because they don't feel like they matter, because we've made, played favorites? The entire city could not operate without our IT department, to include the police department and fire department. Could not. Finance couldn't run. Literally, nothing could run without IT. So think about that for a second. Water. If our employees that worked in the water department, they got left out of this increase, what happens then? What about social services? Our social workers? We barely have enough. We don't have enough social workers, and they're essential. So we're telling them that what they do every day, which is really hard work, that they don't matter, and we're not going to give them a raise? Those are all important jobs, too, and we're saying that just fire and police are going to get the job. This is not all about the evil bureaucrats that have been demonized by some of my colleagues. It is about all the other departments that are equally as important for different reasons. And of course, I'm not calling anybody an evil bureaucrat. I'm just saying that that's what I feel like everybody's focusing on, where these raises would go. All the departments are important, and we need quality workers, because you care about the services that you get and the workers that are all in all of those departments. So to play favorites, and police department and fire depend on a lot of those workers I just mentioned. They need IT, they need water, they need social services, they need jail. So let's not forget that when we're talking about who is included in this cost of living increase. And other, in the private sector, they are having to raise wages. They are having to be competitive to get good workers. That's why you can go to Chick-fil-A and get paid $15, $16 an hour, $17 an hour. They've had to raise their wages to be competitive in the fast food industry. You're having to pay a lot more everywhere to get people to work. The city is no different, to get quality people to do a good job. And as far as wasteful spending, I've been hearing this for four months now, and I've yet to see the evidence of it. We hear it all the time from colleagues, and we keep hearing excuses, how it's hard to get the information, yet we've all been waiting for the information, and I have not seen it. I can ask for it. We've sat here and talked about areas to cut. We found some areas to cut, but there's not this overwhelming amount of evidence that shows all this fat that the city is being wasteful with. There have been increases in costs, like every single other business and person in the city has seen. The city of Lynchburg is a business, just like the grocery store is. It is a business, meaning that if you go to talk to the water department, they're going to tell you that all the chemicals they use to treat our water have gone up in cost. Every single department in the city of Lynchburg, when they're buying goods and services, are paying inflated costs, just like every other business in the city, is what I'm saying. So we're all paying more, and so it is costing more to do all that we're doing. It's not like they're buying, the top of the, the city is buying the top of the barrel, the highest quality things, they're just buying things that we need to function. So what we're trying to do here is figure out a way to help the taxpayers. We hear you, but understand that there are inflated costs. We want to have the best quality workers we can have to do the best job for the taxpayers, so you have great police department, a great fire department. We have social workers that are doing a job, a job that's hard to do. We have all the things I listed, and we can try to meet in the middle somewhere. And that is a hard job to do, but we have had discussions about where we can try to cut. We have. And there's been suggestions along the way, but I just think, you know, people have to consider everything that is being looked at here, and how do you pick and choose who doesn't get a raise? And people in the private sector are absolutely being competitive with wages, 100%.
So I've gone through this a little bit. If we were to look at the 83, a couple of observations on my part, and I've gone through and noted here, at least things I would not want to see removed. City manager's office, the data analyst position, I do not want that gone. Economic development and tourism, $100,000 for Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. I'd want to keep that. Fire, Pulse Point app, I actually think that is a very important, $8,000 basically means every citizen can know what is happening when it comes to EMS in the city. I think that's actually really good communication that we have. The library, online cataloging, it's $20,000. I think if we're trying to ease into this a little bit, that might be something to Public Works, eliminate drop-off recycling sites. I know this is a big one. This is $393,000. One, I was a little surprised it costs that much to operate them. I'd be curious, maybe now or some other time, why? They're pretty self-sustaining, or at least they seem to be. I mean, it's a location that we fill up and then haul away. I guess that's the bulk of the cost. But that's an important, that's not a cert, I mean, that is trash, and we're giving folks the opportunity to recycle. I think that's important, too. Reduce court preparation and expert testimony fees in Social Services Administration. When it comes to folks who need help, if it costs us $3,500 to make sure we have expert testimony for those folks, that's no skin off my back, nor anyone I represent. In total, if you add all those together, it should be around $660,000, give or take, on the 83 cent proposal. I know y'all will check my math, but it's in that ballpark. So there would be a little bit of discrepancy there. I made an observation. Where'd it go? Shoot. In one of the departments, there was a line about getting rid of old cellphone plans that aren't tied to people. It was like $1,400. It's very, very small, but.
Community development.
Thank you, community development. Citywide, I feel like that should be done.
I think that was the cell phones related to positions that would be eliminated.
Gotcha. Thank you. So those are some observations I have, at least on the 83. And then I had a couple of questions. Hey, always struggle to me read my own handwriting. This was mentioned before, and I realize it's somewhat one-time money, and then it would put next year into a funky spot, but I would be interested in knowing whether or not we really could, if we did a cost of living adjustment, make it effective upcoming January 1st. That buys us six months, at least in this budget, and enables us to project out a little bit more. So in short, that would mean, no, you wouldn't get a cost of living and job spent through the end of the year, but you would get it come January. It's the middle of the fiscal year. If that's a compromise folks are willing to do, I don't know if that's legit or not. I believe Councilman Missions actually shared that before. If that is actually possible to do, knowing that the following year, it means we'd have to fund it for the full year, that might, if that's enough, is what I'm saying. I saw that the 15.89 jobs under 83 are considered vacant. If you or your team behind you could come up with the total dollar amount just with those vacant positions, what that would be, that'd be nice. Sorry, I'm just going through what I've written down. And then, look, I don't want anyone to lose a job. Had really robust conversations with folks for about three and a half hours after last night, and one of the comments from folks who live in Ward 4 was, look, I mean, if there are things that are not essential, we do need to explore tightening the belt. If we do remove jobs, not vacant ones, actual folks who have positions, I would insist that we incorporate a minimum of a three-month severance pay to make sure that they're covered, at least for that time. Whatever we can do, the feds, I think, did seven months, so I want to make sure they're taken care of, if we do that route.
And that's one-time money, so it's a little bit.
It is, and I would consider that a contingency. So if we had contingent funds available to do it, but regardless. Those are just some observations. I hope that's productive, but I'd be curious to see what my colleagues think. If 83 was at least starting to get the ball rolling, that's what I would say are the items I would not want to see removed.
Is that okay?
I will try my best.
I'll defer.
I'm just checking off the list.
Yeah, I'll try. City manager's office, data analyst position is one I wanted to have maintained. Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance and economic development, under fire, Pulse Under library, the online cataloging. Public Works, and I would really, really push that we keep this, the drop-off recycling sites. Otherwise, there's no spot to do that in the city.
Basically, I have to feed into refuse.
Yeah. I don't. Reduce court preparation and expert testimony fees under social services. Want to keep that. I believe that was the list. I'll yield back for now. Thank you. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed, but that was the list that I put together when trying to make ends meet.
Ms. Timber?
I just kind of have a general question, and then I'm going to reiterate some of my points, since we're having the same conversation over and over again, but I'd like to add it to the record again today. Does this council value hazard pay? Is there a time for hazard pay? I'm not going to get a response, but I would assume, I hope it's a safe assumption, that there are times where you prioritize hazard pay. There are times where you make assumptions that certain positions have risks that other positions don't, and as such, you pay accordingly. There's a reason that our city manager has a larger salary, because he's pretty much on call 24/7, and there are other elements to that job that require a demand of his time and attention that warrant the salary he receives. So there are ways that we prioritize and scale salaries that are completely legitimate and sometimes legally required. So I would just like to note that as we discuss compensation. To go back to equalization, I've had this conversation a number of times with you all on the radio, with constituents, but I do just want to reiterate that, again, equalization is a decrease in the requested increase. There is still an increase in the budget from the previous fiscal year. I've got all the charts. They're available to the media, they're available to anyone who would like them. But if we track with equalization, it's roughly the rate of inflation, so we'd be looking at $4.37 million, $37 million increase. If we go with the city manager's proposed budget, it's a $13.2 million increase, which is a historic 16.2% real estate tax increase on our citizens. We have all noted the rising cost of inflation. I know it's gone down a little bit, but the difficulty of being able to run a household. Households have far less flexibility in how they adjust to spending pressures than government. We have the ability to come back here and amend things, should that be necessary. Households do not have compulsory power. We are not a business. We are not a business. We are government, and we are here to serve our citizens. there have been efforts to come to the table, to talk about alternate rates, if that should accompany other opportunities to look for future cuts. And that has been denied, and the discussions haven't happened, because meetings haven't happened. Meetings have been closed down, opportunities for discussion have been closed down, the budget timeline has been shifted, and I can document all this in an email, but it has made it very difficult to have that forthright discussion. When terms are being adjusted, when there's the claim that there are budget cuts, when there is no cut from the previous fiscal year, it is a cut in the proposed increase. That's a very important distinction. We need to keep our terms straight, and we need to be able to have the opportunity for this dialogue. I, you know, I feel the time's run out. I've kind of, I like to I, you know, I feel the time's run out. I've kind of, I like to, I kind of pride myself on guarding my hope, because I believe when you have hope, you have the ability to influence change. And I'm having a hard time guarding my hope in this situation because of how the budget process has been handled. I'm pretty astounded at how the meetings have happened, at how this process has happened, that we still have not really had the ability to vote on a rate, and today is the first reading of the budget. I can't believe it. So I've said my two cents on equalization 1,000 times. I am willing to negotiate on rates. I have spoken with you, Mr. Mayor, about what that might look like. I have yet to receive a response, other than to not have a meeting last night and to not hear public dialogue. It's my understanding there are probably about eight hours of public comment that we neglected as a body to listen to, and I believe that's our job. So I'm very disappointed in, I'm very disheartened at the moment. And I look forward to sharing my rules proposal later in this work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at this list on the 83 cents, there's a couple of things that I want to point out on here, because I've been taking this against the managed vacancy report that you guys gave us last month. And what I'm noticing is there are, hold on, let me pull that back up. There are some positions on here that I'm not sure if they're on managed vacancy, on the managed vacancy. So I see two positions on the managed vacancy roster that are, three actually, that are, we've got an Assistant Director of Tourism, an Assistant Director of HR, and Assistant Director of Economic Development. Have we filled any of those positions?
Economic Development is in the middle of recruitment. And what was the third one you mentioned?
Human Resources.
It's an open recruitment currently.
Open recruiting? Because my recommendation, just based on the dollar value of those positions right now, is I would absolutely stop recruiting for those positions and see if we could keep some of these. Like, we've got a zoning official position on here that I didn't find on the managed vacancy list. We've got staff and billings collection, billings and collections, and I only see one financial tech 3 on here, right? So I'm assuming that's more than, when I see staff and billings and collections, that's more than just that one financial tech 3. Is that accurate? That's on the managed vacancy list? Or are those vacant positions or filled positions?
I have two vacant positions. One is a collector, and the other one is a teller at the windows. Been trying to fill the teller positions so that we can have those windows open consistently.
But there are not people in those jobs?
There are not. There are two, but still...
That's how I'm looking at this, is when I look at, I'm trying to compare what was given to us last month as current vacancies versus what's being proposed. And in any situation where we have a person in a position, I would rather see that switched out with a position that is vacant and not funded, and then not fund that position. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that when ultimately the department directors go through, think through their operations, positions, whether they're filled or vacant, are resources, right? And ultimately, every department has its set of goals and objectives that are important. And I can tell you, for instance, the Assistant Director of HR or the Assistant Director of Economic Development, whether they're filled currently or not, are absolutely critical to the success of those departments. What is, what department directors will suggest as reductions are positions where either a service or an activity is being eliminated, and those positions go with it, or positions where, yes, it's the elimination of a resource, but it might not be as critical to that department or organization's ability to fulfill its mission. So I would encourage council to use, to trust the department directors and the business managers who are responsible for the goals and objectives of those departments, to understand best what resources are key to their success, rather than arbitrarily picking somebody because the position is worth a lot of money and it's vacant.
So, but at the same side of that, I think that if it were put to a vote, then I would imagine that if I had motion to suspend the rules right now, we would get this, to vote on this item. But if we have, you know, what you gave me was over 100 managed vacancies right now. And if there's two or three positions that are on here, right, that have people in those positions, I would believe that this council would overwhelmingly support directing you guys to not eliminate the positions with people in them and find another path with positions that are currently vacant. I think that's totally reasonable. I don't think that that's, and actually, I'll make that as a motion to suspend the rules. So I'm looking at positions that are on here, right, that are not listed on the managed vacancy list they gave us in finance last month. That means that they have people in them. That means there's people performing a function, employees in the job.
Can you go to the 83 cent slide that has...
And what I'm saying is, instead of eliminating a position with a body in it, when we have 115 vacant positions, why don't we say, go pick another position that doesn't have a body in it?
Replace it under the 83 cent proposal?
Yes. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So like, instead of essentially laying somebody off, eliminate a vacant position. So...
You're going to impact negatively the organization's ability to provide the level of service that you guys are telling us you want?
Because you need those...
Because the positions that are vacant are, the directors of those departments and the people who run those businesses have determined that that is a critical position in order to meet its mission. I can tell you, eliminating the Assistant Director of HR position, for example, would be, would make it very difficult for...
I threw that out as an example.
I understand, but it speaks to the nature of arbitrarily deciding which positions are eliminated without using the expertise of staff, which is what we've done here. No one wants to see filled positions eliminated, but if we are making reductions, not cuts, reductions to the proposed budget, then it is the people who are responsible for carrying out those services who can best communicate and determine what the absolute key resources are and what aren't.
So I'm going to stick with one position, because it's the one that popped out to me, because it was the easiest one to look for, because it starts with a Z. So I just went to the bottom of my spreadsheet. And I'm going to go with the zoning official, okay? So the zoning official, when I go to that proposed FY 2026 budget, there's only one FTE for a zoning official. So we go from one to zero zoning officials, right? And what I'm saying is, there's 115 positions on that managed vacancy list you provided. I'm sure it's changed in some ways or others. And why are we going to eliminate our one zoning official and not pick another vacant position?
We'd have to get, I'd have to have Tom.
But I mean, I think that we could probably, I think that we could direct you guys to say, like, you know, find positions that are vacant, instead of finding positions that people are in. I think that's fair. That's just what I'm throwing out there. And like I said before I got filibustered by the Deputy City Manager, make it as a motion that we suspend the rules to vote on whatever we do, direct staff to eliminate vacant positions before they touch any positions with people in them. So I'm going to make it a motion to suspend the rules to vote on that right now.
I would like to second that, but I would like...
Mr. Farady, Mr. Farady had some say before you...
I've made a motion. It doesn't matter.
Before you made your motion?
I've made a motion. I have the floor, Mr. Mayor. I encourage you to pick up the rules of procedure and read them. I have the floor. I made a motion. We have a second. There's a motion to suspend the rules on the floor right now, to protect people from being laid off in the city of Lynchburg. I'd like to move forward on that matter before the council.
Mayor, if you can take that vote, I just want to have conversation if I place it in front of us.
I'm fine taking the vote. I just have questions.
Well, we'll all discuss it. That's what will happen next.
That's what'll happen.
I would like to make a second again on that with the friendly amendment that maybe we consider, if that position has been open for six months or more, that it's considered? Because I love trusting staff with the decision, but if it's been open for six months, that tells us what we need to know, doesn't it, I think? If it's critical, and it can be, I don't know if it can be called critical, if it can be open for six months. So I would amend it, if it's considered friendly, to say, if it's been open for six months...
Can I, so it would be, is that to eliminate all positions that have been open for at least six months?
To suspend the rules in order to have a discussion about eliminating the open positions, but targeting things that have been open for more than six months. Not to do it, but to talk about it.
I think that's fair. My motion was actually to suspend the rules to take a vote on eliminating vacant positions before we eliminate positions that people have jobs in.
So the motion is to eliminate positions?
The motion isn't to eliminate positions. The motion is to, before, in all of these scenarios that have been presented, that...
Discuss eliminating positions.
We would know, that we would direct staff...
It's got to be one or the other.
Listen, no? Direct staff, if they eliminate positions, to eliminate vacant positions before they eliminate any positions. We've got a list of 115 vacant positions they gave us last month. So eliminate a, you know, pick from that list to eliminate positions before you touch positions that people are actually employed in. That is, that is my motion to suspend the rules to say, let's protect the people that are employed, because we have 115.
You don't accept my friendly amendment. That's fine. It's okay.
Well, I mean, if you want to say, and target positions that have been open six months first...
Okay, and target, and look first at positions that have been open for more...
So let me restate the motion, maybe to suspend the rules.
Mayor, can they figure out what they mounted a motion on, so I can ask my questions?
I think we have the rest. Go ahead. Restate your motion.
So to restate the motion is to direct staff in any of these proposals to eliminate positions that are vacant before they eliminate any positions that we have employees in, and to prioritize positions that have been vacant for six months or more.
That's my second.
But first, we got to suspend the rules, to then vote on that, and then we can vote on them.
Do we have any discussion on suspending the rules?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, it's all encompassing. It would be one vote.
One vote. Let us vote on suspending rules.
Mayor. I'm fine going down that path, but at present, I'm voting no, because I can't understand what it is. If y'all want to come up with a clear and concise thing that everyone understands that we can vote on at the proper time, by all means. But I'm voting no, because we are talking about a work session and going through numbers and understanding, not setting policy. And that's why I'm voting no.
You want the clerk to restate the motion?
No.
Yes.
Suspend the rules to direct staff to eliminate vacant positions before filled positions, targeting vacant positions of six months.
In any of these scenarios.
Okay. In any of these scenarios.
Chris, you have some...
Yeah, yeah.
Speak, please.
I'm telling you, I would rather cut something that actually needs to be cut, rather than saying, no, we really need this position. We're going to hold it open. It's been open for eight months because the right person hasn't applied. Let's press pause on this, work through it all, and if that's a policy we need to set, then let's set it. But instead, we're just going to manipulate rules. We're going to, we're going to take up time. We're going to, you know, ran something through just to say, yep, told you so. There's such bad people up there. Look how they disagree with me, when all I'm trying to do is ask questions about the scenario. Let's not set policy. Let's understand more, ask questions. I have questions about this stuff in front of me, and y'all keep trying to keep diverting it to be about setting policy. This is not supposed to be about setting policy. This is supposed to be about understanding what's in front of us.
I speak to my second.
Go ahead.
I appreciate, Chris, the proposals you came up with today. I wish it had been, you know, sooner, but I'm glad you came to the table with some serious proposals today. I'm not trying to discount those. I'm very much open to those. I think Mr. Missions had an excellent point. We've tried several times to point out savings and cost cutting and ways to be more efficient in Lynchburg. And I'm glad we're finally getting some teamwork on that. That's awesome. I do want to make sure I reiterate the point that my councilwoman made, that words mean things. And when we keep talking about cuts, okay, let's go back to what a cut is. If I, if my son who gets $25 to pay to mow the grass comes to me and he says he wants to get $50 to mow the grass, and I say, well, I'll give you $30 to mow the grass, that is not a cut in how much I'm paying my son to mow the grass. So let's stop using the word cut. We're increasing spending. The budget proposal is an increase of spending, and when we decrease the amount of the proposed increase, that's not a cut in spending. It is a cut in proposed spending. So let's keep the language clear, concise, honest. People can understand it. Nobody's cutting anything. It's a proposed budget that the city manager has given us that is raising taxes $19 million, okay? I certainly wasn't elected to do that. I'm not going to do that. But I do want to have a serious discussion, and I'm glad people are coming to the table to talk about it. I hope you will vote in favor of this, just like yours were serious. I think this is serious, and I want it considered, and I'd like to vote for it.
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, I'll yield further questions, because I've been acknowledged.
So, the motion was to suspend the rules and do that. Do the rules come back in after that?
Yes.
They would, because it's only for that limited purpose.
Correct.
I would like to offer something first, for at least a point of clarification. Is the motion, the proposed motion, specific to what has been presented on this sheet? So the vacant positions that are listed on here versus the filled positions on here, is that specific, is that, is what the focus of the motion is? Because the way this has been presented, and this follows right up with what the Deputy City Manager had said, is there may be department heads who have not offered up a particular vacant position because it is critical to the operations of their government. And if that position they've offered up is filled, but yet they may have a vacant position, the way this motion is being presented is that they would have to eliminate, say, a deputy position that may be vacant, that they're currently advertising, or one that may be in the interim that they're waiting to fill. So I guess I just want to make clear for purposes of our record that it's, the motion is specific to what has been presented before you on this sheet, that what you're asking for, and it's not all-inclusive, because, you know, this, really, all in all, and I think this is what the deputy manager was getting at, this is really encroaching into council manager form of government with a motion like this. It really is. And I want to tell you all that. I feel a duty to tell you all that. You know, these scenarios were specific to tax rates. So I'm going to stop. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that question?
I've got a point of order, real quickly. If we're going to base it on the sheets, I didn't, I'm sure it was an oversight, but I didn't get a copy of the presentation sheet. So if somebody could, if that's what we're going to vote on, I have been this whole meeting without that information. Just thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Councilman Farady brought up policy, and that this is not a time to craft policy. And my question is, then, will that discussion be engaged with tonight? Because so far, in my experience on this council, with the budget process, we have shut down the opportunity for discussion. When Mr. Missions presented some alternate options for us to discuss, y'all left. There wasn't a quorum. That happened again last night. So when are we going... So when are we going to make policy that then informs spending? Because right now, our government is backwards, and the spending decisions are forcing us to create policy decisions, rather than policy decisions informing spending decisions. It's backwards. And so, I, I sincerely am asking, when would you like to craft those policy decisions that are going to inform the budget process, when the budget is being read tonight? That's the question I've been asking for a couple months now, so, um, I'm available.
Ms. Ray.
Um, so I would agree that, first, based on what the city attorney said, I, while I understand what Councilman Missions is saying, I do have concerns about stepping into territory where we could be removing positions that are detrimental, um, could be detrimental to any department. So I think, while, I think, if we're gonna consider any of these rates, and potentially some of the positions in question, that maybe if we ended up adopting a rate tonight, that some of these positions, um, we had concerns about, maybe that is where we would go back to, um, staff and say, hey, is there something we can do, or in that discussion, when we get there, um, or even now, I don't mind us having the discussion, but I do have a concern about the motion that we're, we're discussing because of what Mr. Friedman said. And to address what was just mentioned by Ms. Timmer, last night was not, uh, the public hearing was to hear, obviously, from the people about what was presented, um, or proposed, that did not take place because Mr. Feraldi made that clear it wasn't gonna happen. So that was not for all of us to dis-
Never got voted on.
That, I'm speaking.
Okay.
The public hearing, th- this is not a debate between you and I, I'm just speaking to what you said.
I'm just raising my hand for you.
I understand that. Um, the purpose of the public hearing was for his proposal to be, uh, I guess, addressed by the public, had there been a vote on it. But because there was not going to be a vote on it, that's why there was no reason to have the meeting. It was not for us to have a budget discussion, that's what we've been doing for three months. And we've had several proposals from Councilman Feraldi that we've discussed, we've had zero actual proposals from anybody else on this council except for one, and then there has been no proposal on how to make that actually work. This is the first time since March that we saw an equalized budget, the first time the citizens have seen what equalization will do to the city, the first time. We've only heard a number, just a number, and everybody's heard how wonderful that will be as far as the real estate rate, and that it'll equalize, but nobody's heard the effects it will have on the city and the departments until today. Until today. No one has, and then no one from this council has said, here how we, here, here is how we can counter that, and that's what we've been asking, make it work, make it work. Now, Mr. Missions did the other week's, made his presentation, and then Ms. Witt said, hey, it's not gonna work, the first time, two weeks ago. So now, we are looking at, or whenever it was.
You weren't here.
I was, no, I saw your gap funding, I, I'm not speaking to you. I was here for the presentation, I was here for the presentation, because how would I know? Because I literally witnessed Ms. Witt say the $4 million wouldn't work, go back and watch the video. Now, tonight, we have three options, and the whole city gets to see it, which is what they have the right to do. So we are having a discussion, doesn't matter if it's last second, Ms. Timmer, we have the discussion tonight, we're all here looking, they have put it all for us to see, whether it's last second or not, it doesn't matter, we've had three months, you haven't presented anything, except for one option, and sold propaganda, telling everybody that it's the biggest tax increase in every, in, in history, with no options.
Point of order, point of order.
Well, it's okay, let her talk, it's great.
So, all I'm saying is, we have options, we've been asked to come together with something that'll work. Now, we're being presented with what that will look like. So we can either not vote on something, and not give, uh, you know, come together tonight and vote on something, which is one of the options, or we can try to do what we're doing right now, which is comb through and see if there's a solution that four people can agree on, which is what I think we're trying to do. But I don't agree with, um, the proposal on, or the motion on the floor, if it's going to put any department at risk. So while I understand what Mr. Missions suggested, and I think I agree with the concern about removing any filled positions, if these are the safest ones to consider, although I hate the idea of anybody losing a job, then I guess, and that's what staff has had to put on here, I guess is what we're talking about, is of what was recommended, these were the positions that those departments said, if we had to make a cut, these are the ones. So-
And oftentimes, they're associated with ending a service, so for instance, one of the, the items on here-
Is eliminate the branch library, right? So naturally, if you're gonna, if we're going to reduce a service, you would eliminate the people who staffed that location, not, not other people across the organization, or, or otherwise, the elimination of the service and the people that we're eliminating, the positions we're eliminating don't align, and, and that doesn't make any, any sense.
Right. So, I wouldn't support the motion to suspend the rules for that purpose, because of that concern.
I'm gonna start with points of agreement. I absolutely agree that the public hearing was for the purpose of hearing the citizens, and I am very sad that that did not happen. I absolutely agree that the public hearing was for the purpose of hearing the citizens, and I am very sad that that did not happen. Whether a motion was withdrawn or not, it was done in a last-minute manner that undercut the value of what our citizens have been trying to communicate during the duration of this budget process, and we did not afford them the opportunity to have that voice. That was wrong. As far as propaganda, I would love to know, because I, I believe that iron, iron sharpens iron, and I think this body actually has a lot of talent at the table, and has the ability to grow towards excellence. And so I would love to know what I have spoken that is untrue, uh, because a 16.2% tax increase on real estate, from my understanding, is a fact, um, and it is outlined in the numbers of the budget. So, the last point that I'll make, um, and this is a point of strong disagreement, I think the timing of this discussion is absolutely essential, because what we are doing now is trying to operate in a very limited timeframe to come to the table where there has been continuous division, the night that we're reading the budget. We have not yet set a rate. This should have been done previously, it keeps getting kicked down the road. You're welcome to respond in a moment, i- it's totally fine. I, I still rest on that, I'm not trying to take away from the fact we need to have this discussion now and make a decision, again, I've alter, offered some alternate options to the mayor, I haven't heard back. So, I, my frustration is that this has been forced to a point today that it did not need to come to. We have school board appointments today, we have boards and commission appointments today, we have rules discussion today, we are voting on a budget that is being read today, and we haven't voted on the rate yet. I now yield the floor.
May, may this term move for a question? Ask her, you have to ask her. No, 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 you have to ask her if she'll yield.
Will, will you yield for a question, Ms. Timmer?
Yes, I'll yield for a question. I am still in favor of equalization, and I believe we can make it happen.
Okay, you asked, you said you discussed with the mayor a compromised rate.
I discussed with the mayor 83 cents and the audit committee, because I believe with the audit committee focused on quality improvement, and where we can incorporate technologies, such as in the budget department, that was discussed previously, and some various areas, that we can look toward efficiencies in government.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for answering the question.
Yeah, absolutely.
My frustration here is that that's not the motion at hand. If we want to talk about that, I'm all about it, but that's not what we're considering a vote on. You see where I, 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 I hear your heart, and that you want to talk about a tax rate, and have this, this discussion, but we're not, because of what the motion is. The motion is, uh, to direct staff to get rid of any vacant positions. So I would ask staff-
Well, that's, that's not the motion, but-
Uh, to get rid of vacant positions before the ones that are filled. Winter, how many vacancies do we have in the police department right now?
We have 11 teens, we're 11, between 11 and 13, as far as we are, that's a, that's seed my pants.
Okay. How many vacancies do we have in IT?
Very few, yeah.
Do you have a hard number?
I, I did you one.
How many vacancies do we have in social services? Do you know?
I'm not offhand.
How many vacancies do we have in juvenile services?
I, I don't know offhand.
How many vacancies do we have in public works? How many vacancies do we have in any, do you see what I'm saying? I'm all about voting for this, guys, I'm all about supporting it, but not in this manner. I think that's one of the dysfunctions of this council, is how we do it, not that we're doing it. I'm all about having this conversation. All right, so-
Uh, Mr. Feraldi.
I'll finish, and then I'll be happy to answer a question, Mayor, if you'll permit. I'm willing to have that discussion about 83, and potentially the changes I offered. I, I, yes, I, I asked, I asked for the floor, so I could speak, Vice Mayor, thank you. I have questions related to that, and I would like to ask them, and will do so, when I would respectfully ask this motion be abated just for a time, so we can talk about what we're supposed to be talking about, which is rates and spending, not positions filled or vacant. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Timmer.
Uh, Mr. Feraldi, thank you for your question earlier, would you be open to an 83 cent rate with the audit committee?
I would be open to discussing it, yes.
I yield the floor.
So, I just filtered what was provided last month, and it's 84 positions when you take public safety out, to choose from. Just pointing that out there, some of them may be enterprise funds, so we may not know. I am, if you're willing to accept it as a friendly amendment, I'm gonna add excluding public safety positions to that. Motion.
My motion, no, it's, it's-
You made the second, you made the second.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be absolutely in favor of that.
You got that? So no public safety positions on that, all right, and then I'll make, so the motion stands, and I'm ready to call the vote.
Well, thank you.
We have, we have been working on the budget since probably December, I just want to appreciate the staff for all the work you've done, um, all the public forums you've had, the budget and brews, uh, we've given opportunities for our citizens, the citizens have had several comments about the budget, about the hotel rate, and about this kind of rating, so I appreciate the citizens, and their voices have been heard over the past several months in questions to the budget. So we asked the city manager and the team to bring back a budget with 83, with 87, how, you know, how it looks, they've given us a budget, we continue to, um, like, to me, is micromanage the whole process, versus, for the city manager's team, they've given us with our staff, what they can do, what it's gonna look like to cut certain things, we need to just trust the city manager at some point, because not, we're gonna be here till probably next year. I'm always saying this, always saying that, no, let's do this position, no, it just, it just, it like never stops. At what point do we say, this is enough? So we need to say, let's go with one of these budgets at this point, and go for it. Um, I think we need to say, they have given us some items that they have suggested, I don't agree with all of them, you know, I'm, I hate to see all the cuts, like to the library, and the cuts to others, the cuts to the, um, the, for the senior citizens, I hate to see those cuts on paper, on, on, because it's, it's on paper, but it's on real people. Cuts to the, um, Virginia legal aid, you know, they, the dress housing, cuts to the Central Virginia Board, the Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, that they work with our elderly population, so I hate to see cuts to those, those senior citizens that are gonna be affected by that. So again, we need to trust the city manager's team, they have given us some suggestions, we're gonna cherry pick every single item, we'll be here forever. Um, I, I do not support the motion, I think we need to pick one of the scenarios and go with it, thank you.
I'm gonna withdraw the motion. I'm gonna withdraw the motion, and, um, you know-
Motion withdrawn.
There's, there's, I'm, I still got the floor, I just-
Hold on, go ahead.
I want to speak to withdrawing the motion, and, um, you know, really, it's very simple for me, right? Could the council members in favor of raising taxes, please tell the citizens where they are supposed to cut back on their spending? That's the question I have for all of you.
Mr. Feraldi.
Thank you. Councilmember Missions for withdrawing, I certainly appreciate it. Okay, so between, um, the two and a half million for schools, right?
Two point seven.
Two point seven, two point seven, um, and then primarily, uh, the same amount for public safety retention, I'm sorry, public safety step, wow, public safety pay progression plan, um, and that would still include the 3%, correct? What is the total amount between both? What, what's that number-ish?
Five point two.
Five point two million, so I'll just say 5.5 for argument's sake. So 5.5 million dollars, we would be asking for additional dollars, and it's going to two places, primarily, public safety and teachers. How much of that is the 3% for everyone? It's like 1.6?
1.7.
1.6, 1.7, so a fifth of it is going to folks like that. Okay? What was the problem with Councilmember, with Councilmember Missions' idea of doing the 3% effective January 1st?
It helps us this fiscal year.
Right, I know it makes it difficult, but-
But ultimately, what, what we'll be faced with is, next year, that the chickens come home to roost.
How much would it save us if we did? Half, right?
It's about 900,000, I think.
Well, are you, are you suggesting, um, both public safety and the general wage increase go to January?
No.
Just the general wage increase?
Yes.
And save you 800,000 dollars?
Okay, so one's-
What was that?
Eight hundred.
Uh, roughly.
So really, in the grander scheme of things, I would argue, I hate the way this could be framed, but that's rather immaterial, insofar as the greater scope of a $240 million conversation. So, what I'm asking basically is 5.5 million in new spending, okay, with how much in cuts outlined, that we've talked about. So that is, and I, I'm teeing this up-
You've got somewhere around 3.7, plus some adjustments to revenue.
Okay. So if we said 3.5, just to, for argument's sake, as it's right now, so we're removing 3.5 million dollars of spending, and we're still doing the things that are, that we are saying is important, and no one at this day, would you agree that it's fair to say, as we're talking about it, and I know I'm putting you on the spot?
Uh, 3.5, 3.7 million dollars in spending, uh, as compared to the proposed budget, yes.
Understood, okay. Now, I'm gonna say this to you, you three, but then to the public, and then to my colleagues, is that something that you are getting 100%? Is that something that you are getting a hundred percent what you want? I would say you're not, I'm not. I won't. All seven of us are not getting something we want. I think in that scenario, that means we're probably on the right part, right, right path. So I outlined the list of things I would rather not get rid of. If we can do that in eighty-three, in addition to what Ms. Timmer is talking about, let's put this to bed and be done.
I have one thing, thank you.
Quick question about audits. So we get audited every year, correct, by an outside?
Accounting firm.
Accounting firm. And is the, are the results of that audit public?
Yes, and they're presented to council by state code in December.
Okay, so we're audited every year. It's public information. Any funny business that's going on in the city, people can find out about. So the need for an audit committee is really unnecessary because we find out about it, the public can find out about it. The audit isn't internal, so it can't be finagled by anybody in house because it's outside, right? So to set up another committee made up of council members who all are already busy to double check someone outside who's doing their job that we pay to do, that then everybody can see the results themselves is, to me, unnecessary. I just, I don't think that we should go, we're only going to agree to a rate if we have an audit committee. That is really not necessary. Our committee meetings are already plenty fun as it is and we got plenty of work on our hands. So I don't think one should be, I don't think one should be contingent on the other when we're already being audited.
If I may interject very briefly. I'm happy taking those up as separate items and I think you'll have the numbers you need.
I wanted to come out and fully in favor of not doing the three percent cost of living. I, I don't know many people in town that work for the private sector that are receiving that sort of raise. And the fact that it comes at the expense of our citizens that I really want to listen to. I want to make sure we're not, not paying for it. When it comes to audits, the thing I probably get more than anything else, and it's because of what's going on in Washington DC is Lynchburg needs a Doge. And I, I understand what they mean. I mean, we're not the federal government, we're not the swamp, we are Lynchburg. So it's a little different here, okay? And it's a much smaller piece of the pie that we're dealing with. But I understand because I have an MBA that there are different types of audits. And the audit that is currently performed is a high level audit. It checks that the amount of money that went in and the amount of money that went out per department is balancing. They're not spending more than they're getting. The type of audit that a Doge does gets into the details. They roll up the sleeves, this would be our employee, the city council, they would work for us. And it was a constant position for years and years until somebody quietly eliminated it. For some reason, I don't know why, I can speculate why they don't want anybody looking at things. But I want somebody looking at things and I want it at the level that we're talking about. And I understand city manager, former government, and I do not want to infringe upon his ability to manage the city. However, if nobody's checking that the money that was allocated for X is spent on X, that's a different type of audit. That's not the kind of audit I think that's happening now. But that is the kind of audit that would happen with an audit committee and a city auditor, which we had for years. And it's required from what I understand. So I don't understand how it even went away. How do we get away with not having it? I don't know. Somebody thought it was a cost saving, I heard?
I think it's more than that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm absolutely, I don't think we need something like what happened in the federal government, but don't it? You know, I keep hearing about money that was allocated for this and they never got it, okay? I've only been here, not even six months, and I've heard at least three anecdotal stories of that. And I've seen some pictures of where, here's the letter where the money was supposed to be spent on this. And then here's, here's, here's the same thing that was supposed to be fixed and it wasn't fixed. So I just want to make clear that there are different types of audits. And I'm still very much in favor of having an auditor and an audit committee because it's a different kind of audit. Am I wrong?
We do internal audits of where we, I have a staff member that verifies payroll and make sure that everything's copacetic with payrolls as far as hours paid, overtime paid.
That's great.
Are you really on payroll?
I'm not talking about payroll.
I'm also doing credit card audits. So those are internal audits that are continued to be done on a regular basis.
And that's great and they should continue and I would not step on your toes, that's, that's, but I want to make clear that's, that's you checking yourself, pretty much.
Checking every department.
Yeah, so I like the idea of an independent audit committee and an independent auditor who is double checking to make sure that the money that we as a council allocate toward a specific project is actually spent on that project. That's why I'm in favor of an audit committee and an auditor. If I'm incorrect, if it's not the double check that I think it is, I think the citizens have asked me for it over and over again. I'm, I'm not going to ignore them, I can't ignore them. They've made it very clear that's what they want me to do. And so I'm going to continue to advocate for the auditor, the audit committee because I certainly understand there are different levels of auditing. And I know what kind of audit I think we're getting now and I want something more.
I mean, I think that's fine. I'd just say that's not the purpose of the audit committee that the city used to have.
Just two things, I'm going to come back to the other second. The first thing is a little more practical. I would like to see if we could get two years, at least one, on the trash fees and the DMV license fees are reducing the fund balance from eleven point eight to ten percent of general fund revenue. Because that's one-time funding. And if we go from eleven point eight to ten percent, that's an easy swap to eliminate trash fees again. I don't know what that looks like at eighty-three cents, I could have told you what it looked like at seventy-six point seven, but I would imagine it's somewhere probably between three to five million.
Two point two and one point five, I think.
What's that?
I think it's two point two and one point five, so about three point seven million is what the.
No, I'm talking about.
The waiver would be.
Is that one year or two years?
It'd be close to, it'd be close to four million that you have.
Is that two years?
Two year, you, you can't get, you can't get to two years, you can get to one year.
So one year is?
One year is two point two for trash and one point five, one point six for vehicle license fee.
So three point seven-ish, roughly? And I, and I was, what I was saying was the fund balance, I, I haven't plugged it in at eighty-three cents, but I think that would probably get us somewhere in the four million dollar ballpark.
Yeah.
Going from eleven point eight to ten percent.
So you can do one year that way.
So that should be an easy, clean swap. Going back to the auditor thing. So the problem that we have is if we got an internal auditor working in the finance department, section sixteen of the charter says, "The council shall elect a city clerk, a city auditor." The auditor is supposed to be our employee. The auditor is not supposed to be the city manager's employee. Shall. That's what it says. And the relevance of that is, it's a check and balance system. Because I can tell you right now that they're like, you know, one of the things that's really concerning me are these capital improvement projects. When, when I see RS Payne in the theater, one of the first things we did when I got here, and you and I have walked in there within the last six months or maybe a little longer ago, is we appropriated close to a million dollars to fix the plaster on the walls and the roof at RS Payne Elementary School. And guess what? It's not done. Right? And that's a problem. When I see our taxpayer dollars being appropriated by the council to do specific projects and then they don't get done, that's why we need somebody to check in on things. And then when I get the, the responses that I've gotten about the, the pool, you know, some of these bids and RFPs and things related to the Miller Park Pool, we can fix the pool for five hundred thousand dollars.
Guaranteed for one year.
So we're going to, three, so, so, so we're going to get a three-year guarantee out of tearing out and rebuilding the whole thing for twelve million. So we're going to spend eleven and a half, whatever it is, million more to just get two more years on the guarantee? You know what? I would not spend that way on my own. It's, 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 the issue is, is that that wasn't your decision. That's our decision. It's not staff's decision to deny options to the council. Your job is to present the options to the council. We know there was an option, and you just said it, for one year, to fix the Miller Park Pool for five hundred thousand dollars. That was never presented to us. Not one time. We had to get it from the contractor ourselves. So yes, I know. I encourage anybody to go read Division Five City Code and see what the internal auditor can do. Because it's a lot, it's a lot more. It's a lot more. And I believe that there's plenty that needs to be looked into. Plenty that needs to be looked into. Because it is hard to get answers out of you guys. I'm just going to be honest. And when I see something like I saw with that pool, I'm done, I rest.
Couple things. One is I failed to find, there's some things on page one I would like us to look at adding back in for the eighty-six cent. Yeah, they're just little things, but they're important things. So under fire, I think we should consider adding back in the tools, equipment for, and contractual services and the uniforms and apparel. And then also the money for the training and equipment and props. I think that's probably important. It's not a huge amount, but I think it's important. And then I would say down at the police, under the police, investigation services, law enforcement supplies and the apparel protective wear line. I would think that those are probably things we should look at adding back in. If anybody wants to look at anything else on there that, I think, Councilmember Missions, if there's anything else under fire that you think would be good to include, I just, I missed that section. You can include all of it for under fire? And police. And then, and one other thing, I can, while I still have, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to mention something about the pool that I think has been overlooked. Parks and Rec is who did that presentation for us in one of our meetings. It was Mr. Woody. And what I think the public has missed is Mr. Woody did the presentation of a complete overhaul of Miller Park Pool. It was not just the pool. It was not just the pool. The Miller Park Pool has not been redone, the whole entire, the whole entire area. So it's not just the pool itself, the, what the kids or families are swimming in. It's the bathrooms, it's the whole entire perimeter section of where everybody hangs out. Is, is part of the cost, okay? So it's not just the part that was leaking, the pool itself in question. The presentation and the model that we were given, it was a beautiful, you know, picture of a whole new design. And that is what the cost, the fifteen million dollars is covering. It's brand new everything. It's a pool, it's a spray ground, it's, it's shading, it's, it's bathrooms, it's an entire new family-created space. And had we just gone and done the pool replacement or repair, yes, it absolutely would be way cheaper. But everything needs to be overhauled and if we had piecemealed it over time, it would be more expensive because everything's, no one's, that thing's getting cheaper. So the concept was do it all in one and do it now because the bathrooms do need to be replaced. They are in disrepair. There are, Ms., Mayor Taylor and I were there together last summer and saw all the things that are in disrepair as a whole in that entire Miller Park space. And so that is where the money is, that's why there's, it's not fifteen million dollars for the pool. That is a misconception that has not been really discussed and I just want people to know, whether you still, I mean, doesn't mean you have to agree to it, I'm just telling you. The design is for an entire facility. And the idea was just doing it all at once and hopefully you don't have to do it again for thirty or forty years because it hasn't been done for thirty and forty, for forty, in forty years. And that is what was being proposed. So I just want to get that out there because it hasn't been discussed and that was what Mr. Woody presented to us months and months ago. So go ahead, Mr. Ferraldi, sorry. He, he had raised his hand for me, so.
With regards to Fire Department, I don't believe that, I, I, the last item, reduce training, training equipment and props and conferences. I, I'm sorry. If we're trying to tighten our belt, I'm not looking to send folks to a conference right now. Third-party assistance for promotional process. I hope our chiefs and I'll say unit leaders know who they need and why they're promoting them and we're not relying on consultants for that. So I, I would push back on all of the items in fire. But I would agree that especially for police, keep, it's thirty thousand dollars to keep the, the same level of government for reducing investigation services, it's thirty thousand dollars to keep it. That, that's a very minimal adjustment. And then, I'm looking, I'm sorry. Protect, apparel and protective wear is fifteen hundred dollars. Shoot, I'll pay for that if I have to. So ju, just, I mean, like, let's, let's be judicious here, but let's, let's be honest. I mean, you know, those are the kind of, that's, those are the hairs I am splitting and I recognize that. But those are the things I would say are, are fair and reasonable, at least in my mind. And one final comment. It was, it was offered and opined that it would be an audit committee, or at least that was my understanding of it. I'm, I'm comfortable with exploring that. I think it's a little bit ironic if we're going to turn around and say, we're going to hire an audit staff member to make sure we're not spending as much when we're going to be spending a lot to pay the auditor to, to do that. So I think if we want to start out and see how it goes, fine, do a committee, do a council. If you want to call it appropriations and finance like the House of Delegates does and do it that way. So one committee is doing spending of those grants, the other is digging into, hey, how'd this, how'd the breakdowns of all this stuff? Great. I, I'm willing to compromise on that, but I, I don't believe hiring somebody else is the way to go. This budget only includes one new person hired and it's because the state is requiring it. I don't think we should be hiring anybody else save those that are already here. So I, I hope that's enough of a compromise on that front. But I, I'm willing to start the conversation about what that committee would be doing and the authority that they'd be granted, so.
Councilman Ferraldi, I appreciate your ga, engaging in this discussion, it's really resourceful. I would like to suggest possibly moving one of the communications positions and funding an internal audit position that's reporting directly to council. I think that's valuable. Ms. Reed made an excellent point with the pool. I think it's an, it, it actually speaks to the reason I've brought up the pool in the first place. And that is, again, that spending is driving policy, policy is not driving spending. And so when the request came to city staff as to whether a repair could be made, the answer in the memo was absolutely not, it has to be tore down and rebuilt. So then we did investigating and the investigating with, well, I did investigating, I, I called the individual, the group that serviced the pool for years, did the previous replastering, is involved in pools throughout the region of, of this type. And we discussed the various issues in the pool. And what was represented to me is it can be repaired for about five hundred thousand with change orders. There are absolutely repairs that need to be made to the buildings. There are absolutely things that should be done as various improvements. None of those options were represented to us. What was represented in the memo was seven million base amount for the pool, not the ten point four for the improvements. So seven for the pool and the privacy fencing. That's, that's all in writing, that's in the memo. I had a later conversation with city staff to elaborate on this and it was the distinction of a one-year warranty versus a three-year warranty. Those conversations all took place and are documented in writing. So it's, it's not. So, it's, it's not to assume a motivational issue, it's that there's a difference in trajectory. And so, we need to be able to have the information, to have the proper discussions. I think approaching the audit committee, internal auditor, really from the approach of quality improvement. How can we improve on what we have and do it with excellence? Where can we incorporate technologies with recognizing where the future's going? Businesses have to respond to external pressures in a way that government does not because government just gets to build on the previous year without forcing itself to analyze itself. I talk about this all the time. Inflation is a hidden tax for government because tax is an equation, right? So, if the cost of the transaction goes up, but the rate stays the same, the end number is always higher. So, inflation's a hidden tax for government. So, our revenue is going to continue to go up as inflation goes up. And we can adjust better to those inflationary pressures than businesses and citizens can. So, I think having that internal accountability, we owe it to our citizens as we are raising the taxes on them, as we are raising the pressures on them in an already turbulent economy, to say, hey, we're going to check ourselves, and you can hold us accountable to it. I think that is more than reasonable. And I think there are opportunities to shift that around. It is a single position.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You know, and one of the things that I want to kind of point out on this pool conversation, and I appreciate the, you know, the reminiscing of when I was on PDC with then Mayor Reed, and we got that presentation from, why, Woody, I remember that. But my conversation that I just had had nothing to do with that presentation, it had to do with the fact that I was the one that asked, can we fix the pool and can we fix the privacy fence, and how much would that cost? And the response that I was given was that that couldn't be done, and that's false. That's false. And it's in writing. Right? It's in the March 14th, I think, budget response memo. Right? And then when I see things like June 6th, 2025, Roanoke, Virginia, Washington Park Pool holds ribbon-cutting ceremony in Roanoke. This new facility is designed for all ages, featuring five dumping buckets, a mushroom fountain, 14-foot water slide and plenty of seating. Children's and their families from the West End Center for Youth were invited to take the first dip in the pool. And I've seen the video footage and the photos. It's beautiful. It looks just like what's been presented for the plan for Miller Park. But Roanoke did it for $3.25 million, new construction from the ground up. So, still, you know, something to look at. Something to look at. But I rest my case on this.
Mr. Faraldi.
There was a conversation about the zoning position here. Is that the only one we have?
It might be the only one named that, but it doesn't eliminate zoning enforcement. We'd have to get specifics from Tom.
I would rather us not remove that. If we had to, for example, swap that with eliminating the online catalog from the library and a couple of other small things, no, we need to keep that position. That's my perspective. But, question.
So, we, we have, just, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
How dare you.
We have talked about restoring a number of the reductions that have, that were listed at 83 cents. We've talked about maybe an audit position. Just keep in mind that the more we add back, the further and further we get away from.
But that's why I was saying swapping around. So, what do you need from us right now? That's my question. Because I believe there's a path that has been at least provided about, these are the things that some of us don't want to see removed. What do you, what do you, what do you need from us right now?
If, if we're to take the list, so I'm not sure exactly where that list landed.
Do you want me to go through it?
So, I've, I've got, we, I think I've got your initial list. My sense is if it's just adding back those items, I feel like we're closer to 84 cents than, than to 83 cents at this point. If it comes along with an audit committee, we need to know if that comes with a new position or not. And I would make the argument that if you're going to hire an auditor, they're not going to be successful on their own. They're going to need some support.
If I may interject, at least for the start of that, I can't justify $200,000 of a new office. I'm just, no, I, I can't do that. So.
I have, I have two possible approaches with that as far as the audit position. I haven't discussed this at all yet. But one is that it would be one-time funds, and we would revisit in the next, next fiscal year. The other is the possibility of the elected treasurer that would oversee. But that, that becomes a jurisdictional question because they're elected by the people. It's a charter issue? Okay.
This is a gotcha moment, so forgive me. I've been waiting for an opportunity to say this. I believe in the city charter, it outlines that council can actually ask this elected treasurer to do stuff just like that. And he can actually do it, or she. So, all the more reason, let's start a committee who can work with the treasurer. If in fact what I'm saying is correct, and I know Matt will go and dig his records and find it.
And if this is true, that's great.
And then they can work together, and then we automatically have somebody who can work with this committee, and it doesn't cost us any more dollars. So, again, I, I do, I'm willing to compromise on a committee because of the financial implications of starting another small department. I, it's just not, not wise.
Well, I, I take, once again, I still have the floor.
Unless it saves us a lot of money.
I, I, I still have the floor.
Yes, go ahead.
Because I yielded for a question.
Yes.
Thank you. So, the, the two things that I'm still proposing with that, because again, this is someone who'd be accountable to council. Checks and balances are a great thing, and it has to do with quality improvement, efficiencies, technological implementation. So, I'm talking about the possibility of using one-time funds for a one-year funded position as we work this thing out. I'm also talking about the possibility of working with the treasurer, depending on what the charter outlines, to function in that capacity with a council committee that corresponds with the charter that also has the citizen component. So, those are the things that I'm throwing out to council for consideration in addition to this 83 cent rate. And I think, again, it is acknowledging what the citizens have brought to us as their concerns, and it is us following through to the best of our ability as far as what we have promised while making an agreement as council.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed.
So, I thought, I heard council missions mentioned something about trying to do the tax, the trash fee. You mentioned it.
And the license.
Right. And so, did, did, are we, are you suggesting we do that? Did, and did Mr. Patrick agree to it?
I mean, it's certainly something that, that, that we can do. It's one-time funds for a one-time.
Oh, to take our, the balance down.
You would bring, you'd bring the fund balance.
Okay, so that would affect the rate. But now you're saying the things that we've added back in would probably bring the rate to more like 84.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think what, to get back to Councilman Faraldi's question, what, what we need to do tonight is adopt a, complete the first reading of the budget. Otherwise, we're not going to have a budget in place by, by June, or July 1st. And I think what that needs to look at is, is an overall spending limit based on a, a rate, right? And based on what I've, what we've provided and what I've heard we would add back, that's probably close to 84 cents at this point. And then there's, we can certainly use one-time funds for the one-time expenses. I think if you do fund a auditor with one-time funds, you're going to have a hard time recruiting a person with, who, let's, let's be honest, it's going to be three to six months.
Schools did it.
It's going to be three to six months, three months before you get this person hired. It's going to be three months before they have any idea what they're doing. And, and, and if they're going to get through a thorough programmatic audit report, six months is not very much time to do that. So, I would just caution you that if it's a full-time, if it's a permanent position, fund it with permanent money.
So, here's my suggestion. I would like, so my opinion on the audit would be, I feel like we start with the committee because I have a hard time supporting some jobs that will be now taken off to then add one on. I think that's not the way we go. It doesn't, doesn't come across well at all. But I'm, I will support the committee to start out, and then you can investigate the treasurer route. That, I will, I will agree to that. I would, I think it'd be good if council members went around and said what they, so that you have now a directive for the next bit of time of what actually wants, people wanted added back in. I, I think Councilman Faraldi's given his. We haven't heard from the mayor yet on your opinion of what's been suggested so far, I think, and, and others. So, I think it's important that we maybe hear from everybody if we're going to try to move forward with a vote tonight. So, that's just my thought. That's all.
I think we have had some really productive discussions from everybody here. You're, you get to preside over it, you don't have to necessarily weigh in. You're listening, and you'll make up your mind. I think we finally have some serious discussions. I have a question for Councilman Faraldi, if he would yield for a question. You don't have to yield, I guess, but just, can I ask you a question? It's a pretty point-blank question. Would, based on the discussions that we've had for, for balancing this thing, would you be in favor of an 83 cent tax rate?
I would be in favor of seeing that the dollars needed to fund what has been talked about tonight are there. And that's in recognition of what the man, the deputy manager was saying, in that he was saying there is a possibility of basically appropriating up to a certain amount and not setting a rate. Does that make sense? Am I misrepresenting what you said?
I, I don't think we got to the not setting a rate, but, but they're two separate functions, right? There's adopting a rate, because, because right now, there is a rate. And unless council takes, takes action, that rate doesn't change, right? On the flip side, there's appropriating funds, right? And my suggestion, at the very least, is we need to appropriate up to a certain amount of funds in the general fund to fund the things that council has stated as their priorities. I, I think at this point, that is something that equates to around 84 cents in, in terms of, of overall revenue.
Mayor, I would answer the question by saying, whatever it takes to fund what I have said are my non-negotiables, whether that means we leave it at 89 and we lower other rates to get there for, or we go to 83 on real estate and do nothing else, I'm open to any option that gets police, fire, teachers, what we've been talking about, the 60 million for schools. Those are my non-negotiables. I've been fairly honest with those. So, whether that means we leave 89 and lowered something else, I'm very open-ended on that, on that front.
Thank you for answering that plainly. I, I did hear you that the rate was, was something that would help give direction. We're, we're pretty close. It sounds like we're narrowing in on a target to do that, and we're running out of time in this meeting. So, I would just encourage us, if somebody is willing to make some motions, the time is drawing nigh, and we need to do that. I'm not trying to shut off debate at all, but we need, we need to move forward.
Go ahead, Mr. Mission, quickly. We got to move.
The numbers that you just said bring us to 84, did that include the January effective of the 3% general wage increase?
No, I'm, I'm, at this point, unless we get clear instruction from four, my assumption is that's July 1. And I will tell you, it, it is, moving it to January is going to create a problem for us in, for the next budget. Because essentially, what we're saying in the next budget is either we should have cut $800,000 more this year, or we should have left $800,000 more in revenue in the budget this year. Because we're going to need that money. Next year, we're creating a problem for ourselves. Next year's going to be a difficult budget year, right? And we're creating a larger prob, problem for ourselves if we wait to implement that pay increase in January.
I'm in support of it. I know Councilman Faraldi, I think he's in support of it. I don't know if there's any more, but I would support that to knock a penny off.
Yeah, knocks a penny off this year, and then you got a problem next year. I'll hold my nose to it. Do it.
One question. I have a question. GLTC, you going to cut them $250,000 off?
In, in the 83 cents budget, that's what's proposed, yes.
Mr. Mission.
I mean, again, I would keep GLTC over a 3% general wage increase, personally. I would not want to take away services to our citizens for city staff members to get a raise. That's my position. There's also one thing that hasn't been discussed is, does it need to be 3%? Could it be 2%? What happens if we do 2% effective January 1? Does that find us those funds for GLTC? A lot of different ways we can look at this, a lot of different ways we can slice it. But I wouldn't cut the service to our citizens just to turn around and give city staff members a salary increase, other than there's one thing we targeted.
Yes, sir.
How much is 1%?
It's a third of 1.65, so, I don't know. Four, it's a 550,000.
600,000.
550,000.
So, 2% would be? I would not do January 1st, I would do 2%.
So, what do you need, Mr. Manager? Oh, Mr. Wild.
I'm just, just making sure I'm on record. I'm not in favor of January the 1st, I'm in favor of July 1st, and I'm in favor of 3%. I'm not in favor of any less than that. I'm just sort of gold on record.
Ms. Reed.
I would support 3%. I just, it's my opinion, but, and also July 1st, but.
Mr. Faraldi. Did you?
I, I believe I answered. I'll say it again. I, I would do, if, if it's a choice between January 1st and all bets are off, I would rather do 2.
2 and keep GCL.
Yeah. And effective July 1. But I don't, I don't like any of that, but that's where I would go.
So, to what I'm hearing, what I think it would take on the expenditure side is we're to restore the reductions that Mr. Faraldi mentioned. If we were to restore some of the fire reductions.
All.
So, so all the fire reduction gets expensive. If, if we were to, but, but if we were to store, restore all the fire reductions, some of, a, a few of the police reductions, GLTC, we were to go to a 2% salary increase, we're going to need expenditure authority that's going to translate to between 84 and 84 and a half cents. Because we've, we've, we've put back a million and a half, and we've cut, and then we've, and then we've reduced the salary increase by 550,000?
566.
Roughly. That's very much meatball math here. That's very much meatball math here. So if that is what four of you would support on the expenditure side, we can have an ordinance ready with that level of expenditure.
So that would be 84?
And a half.
84.5.
84.5. Or, you know, 84, I think. Cause if it's, if it's half a million.
How about this? How about this? Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
We'll pause here, give you some time, making sure we know what number it is. And then first item on the agenda, if it's okay, by consensus, would be to review it. At 7 o'clock.
Would be what?
First item on the agenda at 7 o'clock would be to review it, gives them the time to crunch the numbers back on their computers and see what it looks like.
I'll accept that as long as we're going to adopt a rate.
Well, we got seven days, so it's at least going to happen today, tomorrow, or?
Review, first item on the agenda, review, and then adopt a rate.
Yeah. So we'll run through the cuts or the reductions that were restored and what the rate would need to be in order to make that. The, 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 the corresponding rate to the expenditure level that would, that we would need to make that.
But, but my point is if we're going to review it, we also need to vote on and adopt a rate. This is not a package deal. It's not like we're vote, we have to vote on the ordinance to adopt the real estate rate before we do the rest of the budget.
We'll, we'll bring back what it would take.
Mayor?
And then?
Will Mr. Missions yield for a question?
Would you yield for a question, Mr. Mish?
Sure.
Will you vote for this?
I'm not voting for the largest real estate tax increase in the last 10 years on the citizens' backs.
Well, so, Mayor, if I may speak briefly, it's not. When I first got here, it was significantly more. It was more like 10. So that number is infactual.
Show me.
And I want to stress, I want to stress this, Mayor. This has been one of the most productive conversations, and it takes four votes to make this thing happen. And the dollars we're talking about primarily go to teachers, cops, and the department that Mr. Missions is no longer employed with. I will go to the mat for teachers, firefighters, and cops. And if for some reason that means I lose a voter, I don't want their vote anyway. With that in mind, I propose we recess. They have what they need, and if we want to vote tonight, let's vote.
Vote.
I also propose we skip roll call.
There was, there was.
Still need to vote.
Yeah, we, yeah. Because roll calls, no, we can't adjourn with an item on there if we got to. We have to vote to adjourn.
Let's vote to adjourn.
Yes, we have to vote to adjourn if there's still a business item on the agenda.
You're in recess. You're in recess till 7 o'clock.
We're in recess until 7 o'clock.
So we're just skipping over roll call?
Skip the roll call.
And rules.
And rules and procedure. We'll bring it back.